Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday night, August 23rd. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I can keep you standing, sorry about that. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Larry Fodey. Larry was a former clerk of committees for the council. I think Council Orem, Landers, and I worked with him back in the 2000 timeframe. But he recently passed away. He was the owner of Pastimes Restaurant in town here. So if we could, just a moment of silence for Larry. Thank you. Thank you very much. You can be seated. Thank you. There are 38 items on this evening's agenda. Before I get started, I know a lot of people are here for the McGee Farm or Walcott Farm, so we need to take care of a couple of administrative items first, but we'll move that, if the council permits, we'll move that item up so you don't have to spend your evening here unless, but you're welcome to if you want. So with that, I will ask the city clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council meeting, July 19th, 2021.
Counselor Tenera.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept and place on file. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? It is approved 11-0. I would ask Counselor Tenera.
Mr. President, make a motion to allow the mayor to speak.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak. All those in favor? Opposed? It is approved 11-0. Mr. Mayor, update us on COVID.
Thank you, Mr. President and counselors. I just wanted to take a quick minute to give my regular COVID update. We've been in pretty good shape in the city here. And according to the state records from Thursday, August 19th, 65% of our residents are fully vaccinated. 7% have had one dose. We actually have a few clinics coming up. We have the Food Truck Festival that's coming to Marlboro. We're going to be setting up a clinic for that. The Brazilian Festival is coming up Saturday, and we're going to actually have a vaccination clinic at that this weekend. We're also doing two more vaccination clinics in the schools. Once they get in place, we figured we'd wait until they're actually in school before we ran those. But we got two more clinics going up there, so we're hoping we can get a little bit of a run and get a few more people vaccinated, but we've actually been in pretty good shape. Schools starting next week, and we are going to be starting school with masks on. I think we're going to see an announcement from the administration tomorrow that's going to require that statewide, but we made the decision the other day to at least start the school with masks for both teachers and students. Right now in the city, we have 40 active cases, so it's been hanging right above 40 now for a few weeks. We got it as low as three cases in the city, and so it's popped up, but it's really been holding pretty steady right there. And the hospital has seen some activity. Unlike some of the other community hospitals and UMass itself, Marlboro Hospital's seen anywhere from one to two cases since the beginning of August. So we've been pretty steady there, and the cases that are out there are not making it to the hospital level. Right now, there's currently one case in the Marlboro Hospital. We're continuing with our testing at the Marlboro Hospital on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday from 8:00 to 1:00. You just drive up in the parking lot there, and they're all set to do the testing. Also, Walgreens does it by appointment. The hospital also has a translator there if someone needs that. So we're still encouraging the testing, but it's about getting people vaccinated at this point. So with that, Mr. President, I'll take any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Counselor Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, you hit it on the last note. Vaccinations of staff at the school, children at the school.
Yep.
When will that come up for discussion?
I'm sorry.
Mandated vaccinations. Will that be something that's going to be viewed in the future?
Yeah, I don't see mandated vaccinations come, but our feeling is there's, they're floating the idea now that people will be able to pull a mask once we hit, I believe, 80% for both students and teachers, which is, I think, an easy enough goal for us to hit. I think our faculty is probably well over that right now. And our students, they jumped right up to the plate when we offered it before, so we're figuring, once we get them in school, the ones that haven't been vaccinated, and we got to hit that sixth grade that wasn't allowed to get vaccinated earlier. So, but I don't see mandates coming, but I do see, we're going to continue to encourage everyone to get vaccinated.
And you're saying that's at, obviously, the local level. It could change if federal or state decisions are made. Another question I would have is what percent of our staff within the school system are vaccinated? You said we're at a number. I didn't hear it.
Yeah, the superintendent said he thought we were already over 80% up there, so it wouldn't be the faculty that we were really pushing. It'd be more the students, but, you know, they've been, they've been really good. Like I said, for the most part, they're in the same category as the rest of the city. It's really been amazing how it's been fairly consistent throughout the city. Our immigrant population is running about the same as everyone else. The only ones that are lagging behind a little bit are the 20 to 30-year-olds. If you look at the breakdown of the vaccinations, there's, it's a low percentage for the 20 to 30-year-old population.
Well, and hopefully you can catch some of them at the Food Fest or the Brazilian Fest, you know, it'd be nice.
We're hoping between the two, we pick up a few people.
And question on the city staff.
Yep.
Not just to ask about the school staff, but city staff. Do we have any percent of how many city staff are vaccinated?
No, I don't.
Okay. Something that we should be keying in on, in my view, especially since they work close together in some areas. So I guess with that, continue on. I thank you for your reports. Obviously, this is a very serious situation.
Yep.
Shouldn't be treated any differently from the way it's been described. It's polio. MMRs are required, Mumps, measles, rubella, so we should be treating it the same way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Orem. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, through you to the mayor. I really just have one question. You were talking about, you know, getting the vaccines at festivals. Is this going to be the Johnson &amp; Johnson one and done, or have you thought about something like that versus something that needs a follow-up?
We're not sure which ones we're going to be doing. Actually, we're partnering with Bouvier's for both the Food Truck Festival and the Brazilian Festival coming up. And I believe Bouvier's is also going to be doing the high school and the middle school again, but I'm not positive on that one.
Okay.
But we'll see what's available at that point. Obviously, the one and done is, always works great, but you take what you can get.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Counselor Dusset. Counselor Perlman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mayor, for the update. I know we really appreciate these, and I know anyone watching the meetings and receiving the updates really appreciates it as well. I have two questions. One is, have there been any issues with transportation for folks getting to some of these vaccination sites, like the pop-up clinics that you mentioned?
At this point, we haven't had any issues, and Trish Pope down at the senior house, Senior Center, we still have our buses going, and we've been using both the Framingham and the MBTA system that we have going through the city. The bus that the MEDC has, we also use that for our seniors, so anytime we have an issue with some of the seniors, we get them there.
Okay. And if someone isn't a senior, should they call your office? Should we direct them to you all?
Just call down the Senior Center itself.
Okay, and they're still able to use it?
Yep, direct. Either way, it's fine with me.
Okay, that's really helpful. And then I just wanted to highlight, I know, you know, as someone in the 20 to 30 category, I am vaccinated, so I want to encourage anyone in that age category to be vaccinated. But I was going to say, with some of the concerns around the Delta variant, and I know from the most recent update from the Board of Health, we are at the 40 active cases, but we're in the substantial category for the last week or so. Is that something that we're going to continue to see on the decline, or we imagine to get higher as we get back to school and people are milling about more than they were in the summer?
You know, it's been a wait and see, only because we hear some of the issues in other communities, and some of them are having more substantial cases than we have. Like I said, we've hovered around the 40 cases now for almost the entire time that spike happened. So we jumped up over 50 for a day or two, and then it went right back down, so a lot of people dropped off. But, you know, if you look at some of the communities that are having some issues, some of them didn't have quite the vaccination push that we did, and, you know, they're lagging in the 50s as opposed to 70%.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Perlman. Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Brazilian Festival at Ward Park, do you know? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I think it's in the parking lot up on Lincoln Street. I'm not positive.
Okay. I'll circle back with your office. I just want to make sure that the residents at Ward Park know that that could be happening.
I'm not sure. I gotta check on that.
Yeah, I'll follow up with your office tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dumas. Anyone else?
Yeah.
All set? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Continue on with Agenda Item Number Two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition of Verizon Wireless for the installation of a small cell wireless facility to be located on the existing pole within the public right-of-way at 123 Boston Post Road West, pole number seven, order number 21-100-8355.
This public hearing will be taken in four stages. Public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the city council. We'll start with the public speaking in favor with the applicant. Please state your name and record, or name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me okay, or?
You might want to hold that closer or pick it up.
Is that better?
It's tough with the mask on, so you've got to speak with a little more authority to.
Try without the mask.
Okay, it'd be better if you hold the microphone if you don't mind.
All right, I'll try without the mask.
Okay.
Can everyone hear me okay now?
Yep.
Okay. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is Dana Klasnick. I'm the attorney representing Verizon Wireless this evening. Before you this evening are three separate petitions for small cell installations. We're primarily focused around Route 20 area to deploy these proposed facilities. The area of the first one that is before the city council is located in proximity of 123 Boston Post Road West. That area, as I'm sure this council is familiar, is developed with shops, restaurants, entertainment facilities, hotel, retail establishments, which really are areas of high wireless usage. And also because that particular utility pole is located within the state highway layout, Verizon Wireless has already obtained the necessary access permit from Mast dot. So I think what we're trying to do in these particular instances is really utilize the existing utility infrastructure in a way that allows Verizon Wireless to address network requirements here in the city of Marlboro in compliance with your permitting requirements. We did review this first with the city engineer. We got a completeness review from the city engineer, and then proceeded to file the application along with the plans, narrative, and other details concerning the project with the city clerk's office. So just in regards to the equipment itself, what's proposing to be installed, as you can see in those plans that are being circulated, is a fairly unobtrusive design. It will just consist of a single, I didn't know if you were putting those, a single utility, a single small circular type or cylinder type antenna installed on the top of the utility pole. It's, the dimensions of that are 14 inches in diameter and is a little over 35 inches tall. Also, we also would be proposing to install to the side of the utility pole something that's called a remote radio heads. Those are just the necessary equipment to process the signals. There's also some cabling, wiring. And also, as the lowest piece of equipment, the utility pole owner, Endgrid, requires us to install a service meter to, you know, track the electrical usage. So there really is an unobtrusive and low-impact way of meeting these requirements. Just to highlight once again, there's no ground disturbance. Everything is located on the utility pole itself, so there isn't any need to place anything on the ground. We also included in the materials that we submitted a photo simulation of this particular facility. I think what that illustrates is that it's equipment that you typically expect to see located on the utility pole. It's very similar to what a cable company or the electric company or anyone else utilizes these facilities. So this is what we're trying to do as well. And just to provide you with a little background in regards to the purpose of the facility, it really does operate as an integral part of Verizon Wireless's installations of facilities. We have what we call macro sites consisting of rooftop-type facilities, tower installations. These are really intended to complement those facilities by offloading capacity in these high-usage areas. So it's really an ideal solution, as I said, using that existing infrastructure. And just in regards to our licensing, the process we have gone through is we enter into what we call a master agreement with the local utility company, and for each individual site, we really work in partnership with them to evaluate the locations. A site acquisition consultant will go out, try and find locations that are suitable for attachment that will satisfy Verizon Wireless's network requirements and also are compatible with the existing utility infrastructure. So after doing that, it takes a period of time, then we're able to finalize the licensing with the utility and then proceed forward to file for this particular petition. So as I had said, I really appreciate the opportunity to come before the city council this evening to discuss these locations, and I'm certainly available to address any questions or comments. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Seeing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just have one question, and thank you for the information that you provided with the graphic simulations. It does make it much clearer to understand what the changes are, but I do have some questions as I look at just A versus B type of question, because they seem to be consistently different. But there's a cross pole at the very top of the telephone pole that has three wires on it, and then the one in the mid, there's basically a wire guide that goes through the center on the top, and I'm wondering if basically, are you adding on to the proper pole itself, or are you dropping that guide post that goes across?
We're not adding any height to the pole itself. What we will do is attach a bracket. So as far as any, what we call make-ready work, the utility performs all that, so the extent that they need to relocate any of the primary power lines down, they will do that, and then we would just install a bracket on top with the antenna.
Okay, so for all practical purposes, it's up to Verizon to make sure that is electrically safe and it's done the right thing, and you guys just deal with what they leave?
Yes, Endgrid.
Yeah.
All Verizon Wireless does is install its equipment.
Right.
Any other work is done by the pole owners.
Okay, so you expect the top of the pole to be empty?
It will be designed to accommodate our equipment. We've already gone through the licensing with them, so they already understand, and we've already arranged to have whatever make-ready work is necessary.
Okay. Okay, that's the only question, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Dusset. Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilor, Counselor Landers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment. This will be in public services, and we will have a meeting as soon as we can, in fact, on all of them. Now, Mr. President, I do need a vote on the tolling agreement.
We'll take that right after we close the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, you're good. Any other questions from the councilors? Counselor Perlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious. I know there's several of these coming up, but how long will it take to do the installation?
Well, once we have all the necessary approvals in place, they can really do it one day. It's really just a simple installation where they utilize a standard utility bucket truck, go up there, put the antenna, put the bracket, so they can do these very quickly within four hours or so.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Perlman. Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Seeing none, I close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and as Counselor Landers said, it is in public service. Counselor Landers.
Okay. The next part of this, Mr. President, if we could have a vote on the tolling agreement. We do have to watch our dates very carefully on this, so what I'm requesting on the agreement, if you had a chance to look at it, that we would extend this until September 28th.
Motion made and seconded to approve the tolling agreement, which extends the time period to September 28th. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? It is approved 11-0. Agenda item number three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition of Verizon Wireless for the installation of a small cell wireless facility to be located on the existing pole within the public right-of-way at 493 Boston Post Road West, pole number one, order number 21-100-8356.
This public hearing will be taken up in four stages. Public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the city council. So we'll start with the first portion with the public speaking in favor.
Yes, thank you again. Very similar to the previous installation, so I won't go through everything, but I just went through the purpose and everything, and the licensing are all identical to those. But this particular location is for a utility pole attachment. It's on, actually, on Boundary Street, which is near 493 Boston Post Road, once again right along Route 20. The facility will be the same as the previously described facility with a single antenna installed at the top of the utility pole, 14 inches in diameter, about 34 inches high, and the other equipment will be installed, as I described, the remote radio head mounted to the side. Once again, no ground disturbance or any equipment placed on the ground, so very much the same. We also included a photo simulation for this one. Looks the same as the other one, and the purpose really is, this is an area, once again, where there's businesses and a busy intersection, so it's a location where Verizon Wireless, through its evaluation process, has determined that there's a need to offload the existing macro site in the area so they can continue to provide quality service. Once again, we've entered into and gone through the licensing process with the local utility company to secure the necessary rights for the attachment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the city council? Everybody's good? Questions from the city council? Questions from the city council? I have to ask three times in case anybody's asked. Seeing no questions from the city council, I close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and it is in public service. Counselor Landers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. At this point, I would like us to vote on the tolling agreement, which will extend this agreement up until September 28th.
Motion made and seconded to approve the tolling agreement, which extends the time period for the council to act until September 28th. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? It is approved 11-0. Agenda item number four.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition of Verizon Wireless for the installation of a small cell wireless facility to be located on a replacement pole within the public right-of-way at 11 Atkinson Drive, pole number 22, pole is located on Ames Street, order number 21-100-8357.
As with the past public hearings, this will be taken up in four stages. Public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the city council. We'll start with the first portion, public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Dan.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Very similar to the other ones, the, I guess the only difference, as is read into record, this one involves the replacement of the utility pole prior to the installation of Verizon Wireless's equipment. Otherwise, it will, it will be the same type of installation, the 14-inch diameter antenna mounted to the top with the other equipment I had already described, with no ground disturbance. Once again, this is an area where Verizon Wireless has found a need for one of these small cell facilities to offload macro requirements. It's in proximity to a busy business park, so that's really the area that Verizon Wireless is trying to address as it evaluated its network. It felt it needed, it required an additional facility at this particular location. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the city council? You guys know now, nothing. Questions from the city council? Questions from the city council? Seeing none, I close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in public service. Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Likewise, I'd like a vote on extending the tolling agreement, extending this until September 28th.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the tolling agreement to extend the time for the council to act until September 28th. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? It is approved 11-0. Agenda item number five.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for a special permit for Attorney Christopher Flood on behalf of Post Road Mobile Home Park and Sales Inc. to create a second mobile home park by dividing an existing permitted mobile home park at 181 Boston Post Road East, order number 21-100-8354.
Again, as in previous, this public hearing will be taken up in four stages. Public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the city council. So we'll start with the first portion with public speaking in favor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselors, my name is Christopher Flood. I'm an attorney from here in Marlboro. This is David Winski. Mr. Winski is the president and treasurer of the Post Road Mobile Home Park and Sales, and they operate the Mobile Home Park, which is on Boston Post Road East. It's over between the Phelps Street and the Wildwood. We're before you tonight seeking a special permit, and really what we're doing is, the park is being divided into two, and so it can be split among two owners. Generally, the history of this park, that it was formed in 1955 by Mr. Winski's grandfather and father. They had a permit for 54 mobile homes, and in 1969, they got an amended permit for another 65 homes, and so they have a total of 119 approved sites. There are currently 109 mobile homes on those sites. It has basically been unchanged since 1969, with all of the mobile homes that exist are still there. The property is zoned, about half of it from Boston Post Road to about half the property is in the business zone, and the back portion is the R2 residential zone. In 1985, they put a fully permitted commercial building on the front lot that we're seeking the special permit on, that's on Route 20, and then in 1991, a second fully permitted commercial lot was constructed by the owners. The dividing line will separate into two lots. Lot two, which is the front lot, and you see on the screen, and it's outlined in red, will have the two commercial buildings and 10 approved mobile home sites. Currently, it is seven mobile homes. The back lot will be strictly mobile homes. There are 109 sites and currently 102 mobile homes on them. There are going to be no changes whatsoever to this park. There is no changes in the configuration, no changes in the use, there's no changes in the roadway, there's no other construction or any amendments expected. This is fairly simply a dividing line to separate ownership. Mr. Winski gave the tenants of the park notice about a year and a half ago that he was intending to sell it, and they have formed a board in an effort to try and see if they can purchase the property. He's been negotiating with several possible buyers, but ultimately, the mobile home park tenants have the right to purchase the property if an offer is acceptable to the owner. This is heavily regulated under state law and the Attorney General's Office. So we have a procedure that we have to follow in order to put it up for sale, notify the tenants, and then they have the right to purchase it or write a first refusal. and then they have the right to purchase it or write a first refusal. Previous to coming before you tonight, we had had meetings with the prior building commissioner, Mr. Cook, and went through the process of what we're doing, and he recommended one special permit was necessary. The park was initially permitted by the City of Marlboro, the Board of Health, and it was long before the zoning came into effect and there were special permits in the agenda. So we're seeking a second permit, so that's why we're seeking a special permit for basically the creation of a second mobile home park. We've also been before the Site Plan Review Committee. We did an informal presentation to them. And after several meetings and several revisions of the plans at the suggestion of both the building inspector and the fire chief, some revisions were made to their satisfaction, and they did give us informal approval. Finally, we've gone to the planning board. So an ANR, or an Approval Not Required Plan, was presented to the planning board. They approved it. That plan was signed by the planning board and recorded at the Registry of Deeds along with their decision. And we met with the current building inspector to review the plans, since he was new and hadn't had the opportunity to see the plans from the previous building inspector. So he's the one that signed off on the current special permit application. He has seen the plans, and he's also toured the park with Mr. Winski. Lastly, in case there's a question, because there's going to be two parks, we're going to have a permanent access egress and utility easement so that both parks will have ability to cross the other to get to the public roadway, either Phelps Street or Boston Post Road. And we're going to create for utilities, so if any new utilities need to be added in the future, there'll be a way and a place to do that. So we're hoping that, we understand you'll send us to Urban Affairs, and we hope to come back for you, and you'll approve this special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flood. Are there any other members of the public speaking in favor?
Good day, everyone. My name is Gloria Reese. I live in Marlboro, 12 Gatesman Avenue. And I'm the owner of 28 Phelps Street in Marlboro. And I agree with the plans that I saw. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Questions, please come on up to the microphone, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Jean Coller. I live at number 29 on 100 Phelps Street. And I just want to know what you're talking about when you say an egress into Phelps Street will be able to go to Boston Post Road and to Phelps Street?
Actually, the easement would be for the people that live in the Boston Post Road section of the park so they could, if the park is divided into two and this is new owner, so they would have the legal right to cross and recross to and from Boston Post Road. Phelps Street, the Phelps Street section will remain unchanged, and every mobile homeowner already has that right without interruption.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other questions from the public? Questions from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none, close that part of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Questions from Counsel Dumas?
Just from a curiosity standpoint, from a business aspect, so you just want to sell off half of the property that you own and keep some of your own land so you have some control?
So the plan is to keep the commercial buildings out front.
Which you currently own, correct?
Which I currently own.
Okay.
And by talking to the previous building inspector, we came up with the idea of saving some of the mobile home lots in case we expand those buildings or we need more parking.
Right.
So that's why we're keeping those lots.
So your intention is not to sell everything? You just want to keep some things of yours? In order to do that, the simplest way?
Is to keep some of those lots that I already own the mobile homes and the lots on them.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dumas. Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Counsel Roby?
Not a question, but this is in Urban Affairs currently. We will set up a meeting to take this up.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Any questions from the city councilors? Any questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, close that part of the public hearing, the entire public hearing, and it is in Urban Affairs. Counsel Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move, or request to move up, item number 15 and number 38.
Motion made and seconded to move up Agenda Items 15 and 38. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Those not in favor? It is approved, 11-0. You could read Agenda Item 15.
Communication from city solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding the application for a special permit to build a multifamily residential project in the business district to be known as Walcott Heritage Farms, 339 Boston Post Road East. In proper legal form, order number 20-21-100-7995.
Counsel Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Moved to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor and refer the document to number 38.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor and move it to Agenda Item 38. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, it is approved. Agenda Item 38.
From Urban Affairs Committee, order number 20-21-100-79950, application for a special permit to build a multifamily residential project in the business district to be known as Walcott Heritage Farms at 339 Boston Post Road East. The recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to deny.
Counsel Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the special permit. Discussion, Counsel Earl?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I've been through this before, just so we don't have confusion. Because it could be. The Urban Affairs Committee voted to deny. Now we're switching it to approve, so if I vote in the affirmative, I'm approving the project. If I vote in the negative, I'm denying the project.
The motion before the city council is to approve the special permit. Can't get any cleaner. If you're voting in favor, you're approving the project. If you're voting against, you're voting to deny the project.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that's clear. And, Mr. President, could I ask for a roll call vote, please?
All special permits require roll call votes. Counsel Wagner? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll start with the chair, sorry. Counsel Wagner, Counsel Roby?
Thank you. I think it just got clarified, but I will begin with my comments that I had prepared. So although the motion was from the committee to deny, I move to approve, as it is always easier to discuss, a positive rather than a negative. It's confusing to the councilors and it's confusing to the public. I will also reference the letter that Solicitor Grossfield included in the packet for today where he stated, among other things, quote, "I note the recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to deny the special permit. In the event the requested special permit is denied, I recommend the reasons and factual findings that are the basis for a denial be stated at the August 23 city council meeting so a decision can be timely prepared to reflect the same." So after sitting through numerous meetings on this matter, I personally can't give any reasons and factual findings to deny. As a counselor, I need to remember my responsibility as the legal special permit granting authority, and that I'm acting in, as we were told by the city solicitor, judicial or quasi-judicial role ensuring that the applicant has a right to an honest, uninfluenced opinion rendered in good faith. I will remind councilors and the public of lessons learned at that seminar given by the solicitor. He reminded us that, number one, special permits may be issued only for uses in a specific district which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Marlboro zoning requires all multifamily dwellings to have a special permit, but we restrict where they can go to six specific districts in the city. This site is located in business district, one of those allowed. Number two, it is appropriate to consider the impacts associated with the proposed use and our ability to not vary or waive dimensional limitations, and he cautioned us against applying criteria not in the ordinance. Number three, we can impose conditions based on the interest and the purpose of the zoning ordinance. Number four, the denial can't include reasons that are merely conclusory by repeating regulatory phrases or unsupported facts. So the special permit we have before us today is very different than the one originally proposed in 2020. At meetings of Urban Affairs, the applicant has listened to comments we have made, and they have reduced the scope of the project by 25% with 80% of the site maintained as green open space. The setback from Route 20 was increased from 50 feet to 120 feet, which is double what is required, at the request of the Urban Affairs Committee. The buildings were reduced from the original four to three. The number of units from 188 to 140. Parking spaces were eliminated. Parking spaces were reduced, eliminating the need for the satellite parking that no one wanted. The driveway was moved to align with the suggestion from Site Plan, and the westerly driveway was made an emergency access only. The new footprint means there's no floodplain impact. The project remains 100% electric, and 15% of the units will be available as affordable. We all know that Mass DOT is making improvements to Route 20. From Route 20, from Peters Avenue to Hager Street, which include widening and restriping the roadway for two 11-foot travel lanes and a center 13-foot two-way left turn lane, a five-foot bike lane and sidewalks along the entire length of this planned improvement area. A condition of the permit has the applicant working with Mass DOT to install traffic calming devices in three locations on Route 20. There is language in the permit for payment of $200,000 for design of a traffic signal at the entrance. And we are all aware that Mass DOT denied the request for this traffic light. I will point out it was denied because the traffic numbers, even with the added cars from this proposed site, do not meet the required numbers for a traffic light. There is an additional $20,000 for a study on the transportation options, including a shuttle service for the area residents. And the site will have a program to encourage shared trips and carpooling of its residents. Other positives for the city include gaining open space and money to fund a trail along the city-owned sewer from Route 20 through to Kane School on Farm Road. The city will receive up to $35,000 for equipment at the Boston Post Road Sewer Pump Station. Another positive is the fiscal impact on the city versus what is allowed by right. For me, as I think about future tax-setting votes, having growth in our tax base is very important. It helps keep the tax rate steady and predictable. Those terms that Counsel Ossing always likes to throw around. And having growth in our, and it helps to cover increases in the salaries of our first responders and other city employees. Neighbors have questioned the need for more multifamily housing. Although the council has approved several projects in the past two years, few are actually being built, so this could fill a housing need. Yes, we have received letters and phone calls from abudders complaining about traffic on Route 20. Special permits have been denied based on perceived traffic issues by the courts of Massachusetts. Sorry. Special permits that have been denied have been overturned by the courts. The city passed on an opportunity to purchase this property when the owner announced it was being sold. It is not going to remain a green space undeveloped property. We have received comments from numerous residents asking for this project to be denied. I will remind the councilors that the applicant has a right to an honest, uninfluenced opinion rendered in good faith. While I appreciate the comments from the residents and am not dismissing their valued input, the facts I have outlined, not perceptions of what the project might mean are why I will be voting in favor of this special permit. And there has already been a request for a roll call. I was going to make that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Counsel Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am not in support of the Walcott Heritage Farm project and special permit. And I'd like to provide some context first regarding this decision. This area of Route 20 from the Sudbury Line to, I thought it was Phelps Street, but I believe now it's Peter Street, is scheduled for significant redesign by the state in the coming months. The redesign includes that area on Route 20 that is located in front of the proposed site for the Walcott Heritage Farm project. The only traffic study that has been made available to city officials was conducted back in June of 2019. In 2018, 2019, and 2020, traffic analysis review reports issued by the Marlboro Police Department all note that the greatest number of traffic accidents are occurring on Boston Post Road East. And it's important to note that over 170 local residents have contacted me to express their concerns regarding the impact this project may have on their quality of life and potentially negatively impact their property values based on the impact of adding 140 units to this location. Almost all of the people who contacted me shared their personal experiences, not perceptions, but actual personal experiences with road, existing roadway, existing roadway challenges that result in great difficulty navigating entrances and exits to Route 20, as well as often reporting dangerous traffic-related conditions. And additionally, I'd like to mention that over 1,200-plus residents also signed a petition stating opposition to this project. It is my position that I cannot properly assess the impact that this, the additional 140 units will have without a thorough traffic study that has assessed the conditions as they will exist once the state's construction is complete. The only traffic study we have now is based on conditions that will no longer exist in a few months. In addition, it would not be reasonable to order another study at this moment that is both pre-construction and during a pandemic which has significantly altered traffic patterns. Market research indicates a rental vacancy of existing units in this city of 5.2% with a total of 16,710 units. And that's not taken into consideration the hundreds of units that are in the process of being built. So that indicates that there is no shortage of rental units in Marlboro. So therefore, with no demonstrable need for additional high-end units, the high probability that this project having a negative impact on the quality of life for existing residents and the fact that we don't have traffic data that accurately reflects the road redesign conditions, I cannot vote in favor of this special permit at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wagner. Any other, Counsel Doucette?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too am going to be voting against this. I think that, you know, the developers working in good faith, I appreciate the work that they put into this. But, you know, it's always been an issue of public safety and a light. And when it comes to the response from the state, I fundamentally disagree with that. You know, Counsel Roby talked about harmony with the district. You know, Route 20's traffic is either at 40 miles an hour or a crawl space. And it bounces back and forth between those two. I mean, it's a long-term traffic issue. I mean, it's a long-term traffic issue, and the only way you're going to get your head through that is if there was a light. And people are constantly complaining about access to Route 20. Okay, not just this area, but it's, this would actually help throttle a lot of traffic issues for the trailer park that's next to it, as well as the housing complex across the street. So I think this is something where I fundamentally disagree with the decision of the state, and I protest that by voting against this. Aside from that, I wish I could vote for it.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other counselors? Any other counselors? Counsel Pearlman?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to appreciate the comments of my fellow counselors. I too cannot support this this evening. I'm very concerned, especially with the traffic study that we received from 2018, 2019, and 2020 from the police department regarding the high number of incidents on Boston Post Road East, which have, are likely to only continue to increase once more people get on the road. And I know in the presentation that we received from the solicitor, quote, "The general findings required for a special permit, the use and its impact and characteristics shall not be in conflict with public health, safety, convenience, and welfare." And so I do feel that this is a public safety concern. We see people already walking and biking around Route 20, and it's very unsafe. I know we've had several accidents where people have unfortunately been killed on Route 20, and I would not want to see something be reactive where someone has passed, and we have to continue to deal with that. Additionally, with the increase, with the widening of the road, having people trying to exit different apartment complexes and trying to enter with a center turn lane will be very dangerous. And I'm very concerned about collisions that might be possible. And agree that without a proper study of some of the traffic post-pandemic, it would be, I think, short-term to think about approving a project in this area. And further, with the pandemic, I also want to point out the purpose of the zoning ordinance also is to avoid undue concentrations of population. And we know that Route 20 already has a significant number of apartment complexes around the area, and I do think this would provide, in addition to that undue congestion in the area, even with the green space that would be maintained behind. So while I appreciate the good faith of the applicant, I do not think that it would make sense to approve this at this time, and would appreciate that I will be voting against the project.
Thank you, Counsel Pearlman. Counsel Orm?
Thank you, Mr. President. I figured you're going down the line, so I figured I'd catch the chance right here. I would like to thank my fellows for their comments all around. And Counsel Pearlman took it right out of my mouth. I was standing up to say, public health and public safety are number one when I decide on a vote. And public safety in this case is very concerning, not just from the research the police did, and I did ask them to start that a few months ago, and I'm grateful that they had that nice report at the end, but also my own experience. One day, one day on a Saturday afternoon, going to the transfer station from past Peters Ave, three potential accidents right in front of my eyes, right in front of my own eyes. You know, if you travel it, and especially like today, I traveled it for a funeral, it wasn't bad, except for that excavator that happens to be sitting at the view of the people trying to get out of Village Way. But outside of that, it wasn't bad. But you go on a busy day, and it can be horrendous. So I would suggest we concentrate on public safety. It's our right to concentrate on that and protect our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orm. Any else? Counsel Navin?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I often find myself in this position, everything has been said, but not everyone has said it. And so as the solicitor has suggested, I want to put my comments in as well, and they reflect many of the counselors who have already spoken tonight. I will not be voting in favor of the special permit this evening. As you know, I voted to deny the permit in committee, and several of the concerns I have with the project remain. I do want to note, this is a compelling project. As Counsel Roby noted, the buildings are attractive, the construction and operation methods are environmentally sustainable, there will be recreational opportunities for residents of the city, and the proponent really has done a nice job listening to these concerns. However, you can't change the fact that the project is still going to add a great number of apartment units in this congested part of Route 20. I believe that the potential benefits are outweighed by these impacts. These large number of apartment units on this stretch of Boston Post Road will have an impact on our roadways, on our traffic, and on our public safety. This has been highlighted by most of the folks who have spoken in opposition. We did get that traffic analysis for 2020, and for the third year in a row, this stretch, this roadway, Boston Post Road East, is the roadway with the largest number of traffic incidents in 2018, 2019, and 2020. Similarly, this roadway also had the greatest number of traffic citations issued in 2019 and 2020. No matter which way I look at this, I cannot understand how adding additional apartment units and additional vehicles to this part of Route 20 will do anything other than increase a dangerous situation and impacts on our road. And so I will be voting no tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Navin. Any other counselors? If I could have Counsel Roby take, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for Chair Roby in Urban. Thought a lot about this project, obviously, with the traffic on Route 20, and it does come down to public safety and what we need to represent for our residents. So at this time, I would not be in support of this special permit. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Irish. Counsel Roby, could I have you take the chair or the podium?
Thank you, Madam President. So just a couple of comments. So again, I want to get back to the solicitor training that was provided to Urban Affairs on May 4th. So nine counselors attended, but everyone received the presentation. So it gets important, the council, you know, serves as a special permit granting authority. Remember the three functions of the city council? We make laws, we approve funding, and we grant special permits. So three things we do. As a special permit granting authority, the council acts as the judicial or quasi-judicial role. Key here is ensures a fair process to all involved. The applicant has the right to an honest, uninfluenced opinion rendered in good faith. Those aren't my words, those are right from the solicitor's presentation. I couldn't come up with that. He came up with that. So we take factual information through the public meetings. The special permit granting authority deliberations on the application occur in the open meeting, per the open meeting law. So what does it mean? The facts are discussed at public hearings and in Urban Affairs Committee meetings, and what the council bases the position of granting or denying a special permit. Granting the permit requires detailed findings in support of its decision. Solicitors provided that. Denying the permit requires reasons for the denial, reasons that are merely conclusionary, i.e., as Counsel Roby said, repeating regulatory phrases or unsupported by facts in the record, will ultimately be judged to be invalid by the courts. So it's important, vote in denial, we need to have factual matters because we need to provide that information to the solicitor. So the evolution of this project since July 20th, it's been 13 months. God bless you guys for hanging in. The council's done a very good job assessing the original project that was presented at the public hearing, and significantly scaling back the project, and having mitigating conditions set forth in the draft special permit. The project before the council, over a year later, right? The council indicated the project was too big, and we heard that from residents as well, 188 units. The applicant has scaled back the number of buildings from four to three, and the number of units to 140, a 25 percent reduction. They eliminated the satellite parking. They reduced the number of spaces from 376 to 280. The project driveway was aligned to be across from the villagers driveway. The setback from Route 20 was increased from 50 to 120 feet. The impact of the floodplain was eliminated with the scaled-back design, 15 percent affordable units, and 100 percent electric project. So the conditions that are included, and when I get back up, we'll have a clerk read the conditions, you know, 15 percent affordable. Site access roadway improvements align the driveway to be directly across from the village drive. Emergency access driveway off Route 20, you know, on the western side. A radar speed sign on the south side of Route 20 to the west of Victoria Lane. A radar, radar speed sign on the northern side of Route 20, east of the village drive. Rectangular rapid flashing beacons at proposed crosswalks on the Route 20 in the vicinity of the site. And funding $200,000 to study the design and construct a traffic signal. Also, they'll fund $20,000 for shared transportation options. Submit a request to Metro West Regional Transit Authority to add a bus stop in the vicinity of the site. Grant a conservation easement, and this is important, for the 17 acres that will be in the city's control. Someone develops it on their own, we don't get that grant of conserving that land. Fund $20,000 for a recreational trail for pedestrians from Route 20 to the Kane School. And fund $35,000 for inline, real exciting sewage grinders at the pump station. So my position for voting favorably on this project, the work the council has done to scale back the project was commendable. The tax revenues for housing exceed the potential commercial value which could be built there by right. I prefer to approve a project that the city has the ability to set conditions versus having a project that can be built with the city having no input. And I will use the airport properties as an example. The city had the opportunity to allow an over 55 development, and the city passed. I will let you all be the judge as to whether that limited industrial park at that location is preferable to housing. Thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Wait until President Ossing gets back up.
Counsel Landers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be brief because I still have some positive attitudes about this project. Now, that changed, that probably shocks a lot of you people out there. Some of the people out there I've known for years, some of the people I've served with. You know, the process has gone pretty well, and I spoke against it many times. I would have loved, you know, the traffic lights, but it's more than the traffic lights. This project, in my mind, never had a prayer in hell from the beginning. I really mean that. I'm not so sure, as counselors, if we are open-minded about that. You have to admit, they did a pretty good job, you know, kind of addressing our concerns. You know, the funny thing is, when this project doesn't happen, because it's going down tonight, you know what? Route 20 isn't going to be safer, it's going to be as much traffic. There are still turns that I won't take on Route 20. There's certain east and west, there's certain turns I won't take coming out of a place to go east. You know, there's certain turns going west. So you guys, all of a sudden, all right, you think by killing this project, because my biggest fear is that mess will sit there for the next 10 years. What an ice horse. I go to all other towns, you know, down the South Shore, North Shore. Route 20 is a close road. The other thing, I'm just going to throw this out once, I'm the only counselor that wanted to buy that parcel. I can remember, I stood up one night in the Good Mayor, I don't know if he's still here, the story goes, he almost fell running down from his office down to here. But yet, the town of Franklin, last week, they spent over $4 million buying a parcel of land for a conservation, all right? But yet, I didn't hear anybody out there or here, you know, wouldn't that be a nice purchase? Thank God, someone had the foresight to buy Deloney Park 30 years ago. We didn't buy the Morrow Farm, we didn't buy a lot of parcels of the land we could. I'm not sure what would have gone there, but wouldn't that been nice if all the goody-godies that, you know, watch out for the frogs and the turtles and that stuff, said, let's buy McGee's property? And I'm going to say it for the last time, I know that property as well as I know my own yacht. I worked there five years back in the 60s. I ran that track every day of the month of August. I used to come home with mud up to my ankle sometimes because I knew every bit of wetland there. So I'm not so sure that by turning this down, it's down. Someone asked me today on the phone, I said, I know the roads aren't there. But there, even though I knew that, all right, I couldn't say, I'm going to come tonight and I'm going to make sure the people know I'm bony against it. I don't know if we could have worked harder on it. I think the developer did a pretty good job making concessions. I'm a little disappointed, but yet I knew it was going down the tube. But I'm not sure what the future holds for that parcel of land. I really mean that. I don't want a couple more little pizza shots. I have nothing against pizza, I love pizza, but I don't want a couple more shots and cleaners and that type of stuff, you know? I was disappointed when Apple moved out and we got a storage area there. But God knows what we'll get there. It's not going to reduce your traffic. It's not going to make turning in and out of Route 20, east or west, any easier. I did talk to an engineer, though, from the state. They are doing wonders today when they do over a street, a roadway such as Route 20, and with the width of the lanes, the bicycle lanes, and the middle lane. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we're going to get out of that what you people are hoping for. But, Mr. President, that's it. I mean, I could go on. I'm not really disappointed because I didn't see it happening, but I'm not so sure, I'm not sure if we approach this. I wonder if we start it over, whether it would be a little different. Thank you, Mr. President.
Don't want to start over. Thank you, Counsel Landers. Any other counselors? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the conditions.
The city council pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and the zoning ordinance of the City of Marlboro hereby grants the applicant a special permit to build and operate a 140-unit multifamily dwelling residential project as shown on the plans filed, subject to the following conditions, which conditions shall be binding on the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns. One, construction in accordance with applicable laws. Construction of all structures on the site is to be in accordance with all applicable building codes and zoning regulations in effect in the City of Marlboro and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and shall be built according to the plans as may be amended during Site Plan Review. Two, compliance with applicable laws. The applicant, its successors, and/or assigns agrees to comply with all municipal, state, and federal rules, regulations, and ordinances as they may apply to the construction, maintenance, and operation of the use. Three, Site Plan Review. The issuance of the special permit is further subject to detailed Site Plan Review by the Site Plan Review Committee in accordance with the City of Marlboro Site Plan Review Ordinance prior to the issuance of the building permit. Any additional changes, alterations, modifications, or amendments as required during the process of Site Plan Review shall be further conditions attached to the building permit and no occupancy permit shall be issued until the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns has complied with all conditions. Subsequent Site Plan Reviews shall be consistent with the conditions of this special permit and the plan submitted, reviewed, and approved by the City Council as the special permit granting authority. Four, incorporation of submissions. All plans, photo rendering, site evaluations, briefs, and other documentation provided by the applicant as part of the application and is amended or revised during the application hearing process before the City Council and/or City Council's Urban Affairs Committee are here and incorporated into and become part of this special permit and become conditions and requirements of the same unless otherwise altered by the City Council. The final architectural design of the site shall be reasonably consistent with the plan submitted by the applicant. The final exterior features of the site, including landscaping, shall be maintained in good condition and shall be reasonably consistent with the plans submitted and representations made to the City Council. Five, stormwater and erosion control management. The applicant, its successors, and/or assigns shall ensure that its site superintendent during construction of the project is competent in stormwater and erosion control management. The applicant shall also hire an independent erosion control expert with credentials acceptable to the Engineering Division of the City of Marlboro's Public Works and the City's Conservation Commission. This individual shall be responsible for checking the site during, before, during, and after storm events, including weekends and evenings when storms are predicted. This individual shall ensure that no untreated stormwater leaves the site consistent with the state's and city's stormwater regulation. This individual shall ensure compliance with the approved sequence of construction, plan, and the approved erosion control plan. The applicant, its successors, and/or assigns shall grant this individual complete authority of the site as it relates to stormwater and erosion controls. Six, lighting. Exterior lighting of the site shall be downward-facing and shielded to minimize impacts on neighboring properties, with a lighting plan for the site to be reviewed and further conditioned during the Site Plan Review process. Seven, affordable units. 15 percent of the dwelling units at the site shall be made available as rental units at affordable prices to renters whose annual income does not exceed 80 percent of the area median income adjusted for family size as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in perpetuity or the longest period allowed by law. The affordable housing units in accordance with the provisions of Section 65026 of the zoning ordinance in this condition. The affordable housing unit shall comply with all the requirements for inclusion in the subsidized housing inventory of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Prior to obtaining a certificate of occupancy for any unit within the use, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, in coordination with the city and the community development authority, shall file all required submissions to DHCD for inclusion on the affordable housing units on the SHI, and shall diligently take all necessary, all actions necessary to include the affordable housings, housing units, excuse me, on the SHI, including without limitations, preparing and executing a regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants and/or any other restrictive instrument and any other required documentation. All costs associated with complying with this condition shall, including but not limited to... to, the DHCD process. Recording of all documents with the registry of deeds and marketing plans for the affordable units shall be borne by the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns. Number eight, site access and roadway improvements. A, the use shall access Route 20 with a single driveway entrance located directly opposite Village Drive. The applicant shall provide an emergency access driveway off Route 20 on the western side of the site with an access or gating system approved during site plan review. B, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns shall coordinate with the city and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to ensure that the development of the use does not conflict with the planned improvements of Route 20 in the vicinity of the site. The final design and configuration of the site's access driveway shall incorporate the latest design of the planned Mast Dot improvements to Route 20 and shall be approved by both Mast Dot and the Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works. C, in addition to the planned improvements to Route 20, the applicant shall, in coordination with Mast Dot and the Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works, make the following traffic calming improvements in the vicinity of the site. One, a radar speed sign on the southern side of Route 20 to the west of Victoria Lane. Two, a radar sign on the northern side of Route 20 to the east of Village Drive. And three, rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the proposed crosswalks over Route 20 in the vicinity of the site. D, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns shall provide a payment to the city in the amount of $200,000 to be used by the City Council or its designee towards the study, design, and construction of a traffic signal at the intersection of Route 20, Village Drive, and the site's main entrance. Provided, however, that if the Massachusetts Department of Transportation does not authorize said traffic signal within three years following the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy for the use, then the funds may be used by the City Council or its designee for the study, design, and construction of comparable transportation safety improvements in the vicinity of the site for beautification improvements along Route 20 in the vicinity of the site or another project designed to improve transportation and aesthetics along Route 20 in the vicinity of the site. Nine, transportation alternatives. A, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns shall provide a payment to the city in the amount of $200,000 to be used by the City Council or its designee to study and/or fund shared transportation options, including but not limited to shuttle service to provide access between the site and its neighboring residential properties and downtown Marlborough. B, prior to applying for a building permit for the use, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns shall submit a request to the Metro West Regional Transit Authority to add a bus stop in the vicinity of the site and its neighboring residential properties. C, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns shall provide a written summary of a program sponsored for the site's residents to encourage shared trips and carpooling to reduce vehicle trips to and from the site and shall submit an annual report on this program to the Building Commissioner on or before January 30th during each year that the use remains in operation. Ten, open space. A, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns shall grant a conservation restriction to the City's Conservation Commission or its designee over areas of the site identified as CR Area 1 and CR Area 2 and CR Area 3, including any area outlined in red shown in the plan attached as attachment B. The form of this conservation restriction over the restricted land shall be approved by the city solicitor and the city conservation officer prior to the issuance of the building permit. The conservation restriction must be approved by the Conservation Commission, the City Council, and finally signed by the mayor before being approved by the Secretary, State Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The conservation restriction must be granted and recorded prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any unit within the use or at a later time agreed to in writing by the city conservation officer. The conservation restriction will allow for the mowing and management of portions of CR Area 1 to enhance wildlife habitat and meadows as approved by the Conservation Commission and shall allow for the passive recreational use of CR Area 1 by the site's residents. B, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns shall provide a payment to the city in the amount of $20,000 to be used by the City Council or its designee to study and/or fund a recreational trail for pedestrians along the city-owned sewer land adjacent to the site to provide public access and connections between Route 20 and the site's neighboring residential properties and Kane School. Eleven, sewer pump station improvements. Prior to the issuance of building permit, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns shall provide a payment to the city for its Department of Public Works or its designee not to exceed $35,000 to be used for the city for the installation of an inline sewage grinder at the Boston Post Road Pump Station in the vicinity of the site. Twelve, snow removal. Snow removed from the driveways, parking areas, and walkways at the site may not be stored in a manner that creates a shortage of onsite parking for residents. If onsite snow storage creates a shortage of onsite parking for residents, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns have stockpiled snow removed from the site. Thirteen, other approvals. The applicant, its successors, and/or assigns shall comply with an order of conditions from the City's Conservation Commission and a floodplain special permit from the City's Zoning Board of Appeals. Fourteen, recording of decision. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns at its expense shall record this special permit in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds after the city clerk has certified that the 20-day period for appealing this special permit has elapsed with no appeal having been filed and before the applicant has applied to the Building Commissioner for a building permit. Upon recording, the applicant shall forthwith provide a copy of the recorded special permit to the City Council Office, the Building Department, and the City Solicitor's Office.
Need water?
No, thank you, sir.
Anyone need it repeated? Okay, so the motion before the councils to approve the special permit, you heard the conditions, are any final comments before taking the vote? Again, the vote in favor is to approve. A negative vote is to deny. Any additional comments from the counselors? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes no. I mean, I'm sorry, votes yes. I got myself confused.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes no.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes no.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes no.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes no.
Counsel Perlman.
Counsel Perlman votes no.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes no.
Five in favor, six opposed, sir.
It's not eight votes. The permit, the special permit for the Walcott Farm is not approved by a vote of six denials and five in favor. Counsel will take a two-minute recess to clear the chambers. I thought you were going to be brief. That's good. Okay, we'll call the council back in a session at 9:23 with Agenda Item Number Six.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $5,000 from Bay Path Elder Services awarded to the Council on Aging to assist with the transportation needs for Marlborough seniors.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is approved unanimously. Agenda item seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding gift acceptance in the amount of $10,000 from the late Paul and Marie Winski to the Council on Aging to assist seniors, excuse me, that participate in senior center activities.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the Winski family for the most generous gift for the City of Marlborough. It's, you know, every day you look around and we have residents that are very philanthropic and certainly these funds will be certainly needed during the COVID and having people get to their doctor's appointment. So thank you to the Winski family. Motion to approve the grant, the gift, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the gift. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is approved unanimously. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding appointment of Linda Warren to the Council on Aging Board for a three-year term from the date of council confirmation.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to move to personnel.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is approved unanimously. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding notification of mayoral appointment of Kevin McLaughlin to the Cultural Council for a three-year term effective September 1, 2021 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 10, Section 58.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is approved unanimously. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed amendment to the City Code, Chapter 67, Section 11A, amending tax collector appointment terms and duties and Chapter 125, Section 6 salary schedule, along with a proposed job description pursuant to Chapter 125, Section 5, for the position of tax collector, Assistant Director of Finance.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to Finance Committee and to advertise.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. It is approved 11-0. Agenda item 11.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed amendment to the City Code, Chapter 7, Article 4, Department of Public Works, by adding a new Section 31D relative to the position of Assistant Commissioners along with a proposed job description pursuant to Chapter 125, Section 5, for the position of Assistant Commissioner of Facilities.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee and to advertise.
Motion's made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda item 12.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed amendment to City Code, Chapter 125, Section 6, Salary Schedule, to amend the salaries for the police and fire chiefs to be effective July 1, 2021.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee and to advertise.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to get a clarification. Were you talking about 2021, which would be retroactive? Or is that a typo implying 2022?
It says 2021, so I'm sure the Finance Committee will take that up in committee.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Any discussion, any further discussion on the motion to refer to Finance Committee and to advertise? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda item 13.
Communication from Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding request for a special license for temporary charitable purposes for Famara Inc. pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 101, Section 12.
Counsel Tanara.
Mr. President, move to line item 23.
Motion made and seconded to move this item to Agenda Item 23. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda item 14.
Communication from Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding petition of Verizon Wireless for the installation of a small cell wireless facility to be located in Poll 19 within the layout of the, within the layout of Boston Post Road West in proper legal form, Order Number 21-108294B.
Counsel Landers.
Do we want to move that to item 37?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I'd recommend, that we do move that to item 37.
Motion made and seconded to move this item to Agenda Item Number 37. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is approved. Agenda item 16.
Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding request for approval of a freestanding sign local routes 910 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside District.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to approve unless there is an objection from anybody. I think this meets the code. We are the approving authority.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sign request. Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am, it's more to do with the size than anything else. This is effectively a six-foot by 10-foot sign. They make it pretty much the biggest sign that there is on that side of town. So I was expecting this to go to Urban Affairs to discuss it because I'd like to see if there's a way to keep it, reduce its size.
See where the vote is, I mean, unless you're going to amend it, I mean, the votes to approve the sign as presented.
Well, if it goes to committee, then we can talk about it in committee.
That's not a motion before the committee right now.
Okay, that's fine. I will hold. So I will vote against approval for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Counsel Roby.
Thank you. I will just remind people that it, that the sign, although big, does fit into what is allowed. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
That is correct. Any further discussion? Counsel Oram.
Is this the sign that's already up there that is on the side of the building, or is this for the front of the building?
Freestanding front sign.
It's with the other signs. And the size of it will be comparable to those other signs, or?
I don't know what the size of the other signs are.
Yeah, no, they're two by four, most of them. When I went in to look, so. I don't know if anyone else knows. Will this mean all the other signs will be enlarged accordingly? You know, if they see this, it could generate other parties to have interest to make their signs bigger.
Speculative.
Concerning, but I will probably vote no unless it goes to committee. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Because Counselor Oram brought it up, the sign is six feet across and 10 feet high. So, it's a big sign. Thank you.
Anyone else on the motion to approve the sign request? All those in favor? One, two, three. One, two, three, four, five, six. I make seven. All those opposed? One, two, three.
Who am I to guess?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
It's got to come to eleven. All right, so I can't count to eight. The motion to approve the sign request is approved. Eight in favor, three opposed. Agenda Item 17. Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding request for approval of two flat wall signs, Val's Plaza, 561 Boston Post Road East, within the Wayside District. Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have some questions on this, and I'm sure other people will. I'm going to move to refer this one to Urban Affairs.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved 11-0 to go to Urban Affairs. Item 18.
Petition for Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England to install a new jointly owned pole number 15-5 and permission for N-Grid to install 350K 12208 transformers and underground riser perm connection to a customer at 121 Bolton Street.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will learn a lot at that meeting, and I can come back and explain exactly what they want to do there. Mr. President, please refer this to Public Services and set the date for a public hearing.
Motion's been made and seconded to refer to the Public Services, and we will set a public hearing for September 13. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved 11-0. Agenda Item 19.
Petition for Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England to install a new jointly owned pole 1515 at 181 Cedar Hill Street.
Counsel Landers.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Services and set the date for a public hearing.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee and set a public hearing for September 13. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed. That is approved 11-0. Agenda Item 20.
Petition for Massachusetts Electric to replace direct buried cable with cable in conduit using directional drill method on Farquhar Drive.
Counsel Landers.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Services and set the date for a public hearing.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee and set a public hearing for September 13. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved 11-0. Agenda Item 21.
Communication from Diane Nelligan of One Energy, Inc. regarding request for expedited processing of a request from Massachusetts Electric in Verizon for the installation of a jointly owned pole, transformers and underground riser perm connection at 121 Bolton Street.
Counsel Landers.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Refer it to Public Services, set the date. We might as well go over the same date, the 13th.
Well, this one's just a communication, this is the communication that they want the council to act efficiently.
Well, that's what I plan on. This is for the gas station.
So, this will just be accept, place on file.
Okay, fine.
That's what they want.
Yeah, we do want to move on this.
Wisdom of the council will decide how fast we move.
Okay, well, we'll see. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. All those in favor? Opposed. It is filed. Agenda Item 22.
Communication from Attorney Robert Buckley regarding revised language on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650 of the Code to add a new section to create the commercial village housing overlay district, Order Number 21-1008293B.
Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a lengthy report that talks about this. I would ask for a suspension to remove this item from committee so that we, as a body, can take it up and refer the document that we have to be in proper legal form so we can vote on the September 13 agenda. My concern is this has a 90-day timeframe. The September 13 meeting is the last meeting. We have to take this up. If we don't, it dies in committee, and my guess is they will just bring it back again, and we start the whole process all over again. So, I had commented when we began this process that I was going to try not to let that happen. If we don't want this to come out of committee and we want it to stay in committee, then I will do my best to get a meeting set up so that a report can be made. But we've had a discussion. I think we all worked on the details of what we want in the change of the code, and I would ask that we suspend to be able to take this up tonight. Thank you.
Motion's been made, motion on the suspension for Counsel Robie. All those in favor of the suspension? Suspension is approved. Counsel Robie.
Thank you. I would move to have the document that we received from Attorney Buckley sent to the solicitor to be put in proper form for the vote on the September 13 agenda.
Motion made and seconded to send the correspondence to the solicitor to put in proper form so that the council can vote on it at the September 13, our next meeting. Everybody clear? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved 11-0 to send to the solicitor to put in proper format. Item 23.
Communication from Famara, Inc. regarding request for grant of exemption from the Massachusetts Transient Vendor Law as allowed by Mass. General Law, Chapter 101, Section 12A, for the convention being held in Marlboro from September 10th to 12th, 2021.
Counsel Tenera.
Judge, motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the exemption request. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved 11-0. Agenda Item 24.
Communication from Central Mass. Mosquito Control Project regarding personnel will be in the community responding to residents' concerns about mosquitoes on various states in August and September 2021.
Counsel Oram.
Thank you, Mr. President. The dates are noted. I would ask that we accept and place this notice on file and also within our website, which I know the clerk always does. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. Make sure the clerk posts it appropriately. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved 11-0. Item 25.
Communication from Massachusetts Electric Company and Nantucket Electric Company, each doing business as National Grid regarding approval of deferral of major storm threshold amounts for calendar year 2020, DPU File Number 21-75.
Counsel Tenera.
Judge, accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved 11-0. Agenda Item 26.
Communication from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Banks regarding public comment period on a proposed license application filed by Marlboro Services, Inc., doing business as Brazil Remessa to operate a Czech cashier location at 38 Main Street pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 169A, Section 3.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that's just a communication, but I'd like the record to reflect that I recused from this vote. Thank you.
Please let the record reflect that Counsel Dumas will abstain from participating. Counsel Tenera.
Judge, accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved. 10 in favor, none opposed, 1 recused. 27.
Communication from a resident in opposition of the application for special permit to build a multifamily residential project in the business district to be known as Walcott Heritage Farms at 339 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 2021-1007995.
Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. The communications. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed. It is filed 11-0. Agenda Item 28.
Communication from a resident of Forest Street in support of the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650 of the Code to add a new section to create the commercial village housing overlay district, Order Number 21-1008293.
Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed. It is filed. 29.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions and Committees.
Mr. President.
Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions and Committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards and Commissions, Committees. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved 11-0. Item 30.
Claims.
Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to submit claims to the Legal Department.
Motion made and seconded to send the claims to the Legal Department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. It is forwarded to the Legal Department. You have reports now?
Yes, sir.
Reports of committee. Counsel Robie.
Am I the only one? Oh, my goodness. All right. I hope everybody's comfortable. I have not as much reading, but maybe as some as the city clerk. So, I am reporting out meetings on Tuesday, July 26, where we took up Order Number 21-108328, a special permit application for Edgewood Entertainment, LLC, to operate ex-golf and indoor golf simulator recreational facility with a bar area in an existing building at 229 Boston Post Road West. We met with the applicant, Holly Salvi, who is the co-officer of Edgewood Entertainment. She went through what they planned on doing. We did discuss the alcohol aspect of this, and then we reviewed the draft special permit. There was discussion on the hours proposed from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. and the availability of liquor during all the hours. The franchise requires a full all-service liquor license for the operation, and they stated they would be extremely cautious in serving alcohol so they could maintain their license. The committee agreed that the solicitor would be asked to review conditions on hours of serving liquor that apply to Apex, which has a similar facility, and add appropriate conditions when putting the special permit in proper form. It was pointed out that the numbers in Item C need to be corrected to remove the double nine, and the solicitor would fill in the missing numbers in the decision. Counsel Ducey moved to recommend approval of the special permit as amended. The motion was seconded. The motion carried five to nothing, and I will be asking for a suspension this evening so this can go to the solicitor.
You want to take it up now? We'll just do this. Yeah, we'll just get them out. That way, we don't have to, folks, longer than they have to.
For me, move to refer, or move to suspend.
Counsel Robie's asked for suspension of the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed. It is approved. Counsel Robie.
Move to refer to the solicitor, so this is placed in proper form and on our next agenda.
Motion's been made and seconded to refer to the solicitor. We put in proper format so we can vote on it at the next agenda. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Approved. It's approved 11-0.
Thank you. So, the next item that we took up was Order Number 21-108293 referencing 18107134B, a petition from Attorney Robert Buckley on behalf of Marlboro Northboro Land Realty Trust regarding the proposed amendment to the zoning code, Chapter 650, by adding to Article 6, Section 65035 commercial village overlay district in accordance with Exhibit A attached. So, the petitioners were there. They talked about this being, although the residential single-family housing was approved by the planning board, they would actually prefer to develop this as transitional zone with the proposal designed to offer a buffer between the nearby commercial property and the existing housing. An attempt to do this in 2018 received a negative planning board recommendation. It also received a negative recommendation this time around, and I did read the letter from the planning board. So, we went through the draft that was given to us. I will not read all of this. Everybody has a copy. This will be in the minutes, and the city clerk will get the privilege of reading it when we have the conditions. But it was moved and seconded. This was left in committee. So, at this point now, it is out of committee. It will be on the agenda at our next meeting. The next meeting that we had was held on Monday, August 16. We took up multiple items at that meeting, beginning with Order Number 21-108307, an application for a special permit from Attorney Brangwin on behalf of Raising Cane's Restaurants, LLC, to construct and operate a restaurant with two drive-through service lanes on the site at 141 Boston Post Road West. We went through this with the petitioners. Attorney Brangwin briefly discussed the plans for the site and Raising Cane's operations, which he had thoroughly discussed at the public hearing. We did receive a letter from William Squires, who was an attorney for McDonald's, who was in abutter to the property. I did read through the letter. Nobody on the committee felt that any of the points made were worth bringing in. We did go ahead and discuss. We reviewed the draft special permit. We'll go back to site plan when we are finished with it, and site plan could take up the comments in the letter. Discussion was held on the hours of operation, both at the restaurant and the drive-through, but no changes were made. Counsel Landers moved to recommend approval. The motion carried five-zero, and again, I'm asking for a suspension so that this could also be sent to the solicitor so it's ready for our agenda on the 13th.
Chair is asking for suspension of the rules. All those in favor? Opposed. Suspension is approved. Counsel Robie.
So, move to have this referred to the solicitor to be put in proper form.
Motion's made and seconded to refer to the solicitor to put the Raising Cane's in proper format. Any discussion on the motion? That's okay. You went in a rush. I'm good for that. All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved 11-0 to send to the solicitor to put in proper form.
All right. Next up was Order Number 21-108345, application for a special permit by Attorney Falk on behalf of De Silva Landscaping Incorporated to construct and operate a landscaper's yard at the Airport Industrial Park, 685 Farm Road, Unit 17. Attorney Falk was present. He went over the conditions based on the comments from the public hearing. We reviewed the comments received from department managers, and we did not actually go through a full review of all the conditions. Everybody was comfortable with them. Counsel Ducey did ask for clarification on the locust map. We now have a new map with the correct number. And Counsel Ducey moved to recommend approval of the special permit with the amended site plan. The motion carried five-zero. Again, I'm asking for a suspension so this can be on the next agenda.
Chair Robie's asking for a suspension of the rules. All those in favor? Opposed. The rules are suspended. Counsel Robie.
So, move to refer this to the solicitor to be placed in proper form for our next agenda.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the solicitor to put the permit in proper format. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved 11-0.
Next up is Order Number 21-108346, an application for a special permit by Attorney Falk on behalf of Lauraval Masonry, LLC, to construct and operate a contractor's yard at the Airport Industrial Park, 685 Farm Road, Unit 18. The chair read a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest from Counsel Ducey. Presenting was Attorney Falk. He mentioned the changes to the conditions based on comments from the public hearing. Counsel Ducey moved to recommend approval of the special permit. The motion carried five-zero. Again, I'm asking for a suspension so this can be referred.
Chairman Robie's asking for suspension of the rules. All those in favor? Opposed. Suspension carries. Counsel Robie.
Move to refer to the solicitor to be put in proper form for the next agenda.
Motion made and seconded to refer the permit to the solicitor to put in proper format. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Sorry I missed this at the beginning of it, but as you listen to Counsel Robie go through this, I was not the person to approve it. I specifically backed away from that. I believe it was Counselors Landers that actually proved it. If we can check into that.
We'll watch the video.
I am sorry, Counsel Ducey. I cannot understand what you're saying. I can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. Sorry. I didn't motion to approve this in the committee. I backed away. I knew I wasn't specific. I knew I wasn't specifically going to do it. I believe Counsel Landers did instead. Is that clear?
Get the video.
Yeah.
We'll check it up and we'll...
Check it out, yes. I apologize.
I just want to correct. No worries.
I did watch the video, so I was trying to make sure, because we covered a lot of ground that night.
I understand. That's...
All right, we will... It still was moved to approve and carried.
Motion made and seconded to approve the permit and... Well, to send the permit to the solicitor to put in proper format for our vote at the next city council meeting. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Opposed, approved 11-0 to send to the solicitor.
Thank you. The next order is Order Number 21-108353, an application for site plan review and approval from Attorney Falk on behalf of Global Montello Group Incorporated to add a patio with seating next to its newly renovated All-Town Convenience Store, 656 Boston Post Road East, within the Wayside zoning district. So Attorney Falk was present. He also had somebody from Boulder Engineering. They went through the plans. We reviewed the draft site plan and the proposed amendments provided by Priscilla Ryder, the conservation officer. Those are all noted in the minutes. The petitioner met with professional site plan. However, we are the site plan approval, so we will have the final say on this one. Counsel Dusset, move to approve the recommendation? With site... Moved to recommend approval of the site plan with conditions as amended. The motion carried five to nothing, and I am supposed to check with the solicitor. This does need to be suspended and referred and will be on the next agenda.
The chair is asking for suspension of the rules. All those in favor? Opposed, suspension granted. Counsel Roby.
Thank you. Move to send this to the solicitor so that he looks over the site plan and makes sure that it is all proper and on our agenda for the next meeting.
Motion made and seconded to send the application for the site plan to the solicitor to put in proper format for our next meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, approved 11-0. Counsel Roby.
Thank you. I believe the last item was Order Number 20-108046, a request from William Camuso on behalf of Camuso Enterprises LLC to operate a gas station, Shell Station, 431 Lincoln Street on a 24-hour basis pursuant to Chapter 342, Section 2 of the Code of the City of Marlborough. There's a lot of information in the minutes, but basically this is still in committee until I can get a document back to the committee members, and we will set up a meeting to do that. And that is the end of my report. There was really no action needed on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Any other counselors have anything to report? Seeing none. Agenda item 31.
Order that the city council president establish a city council re-presincting committee consisting of three members to review the 2020 census data provided by the Secretary of State's Office and report back to the city council by October 4, 2021, submitted by President Austin.
Counsel Tenera. Motion made and seconded to approve. Discussion. Counsel Perman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious, a little bit more information about what the committee will be reviewing and who will be on the committee.
I'm happy to talk that offline. It's the same thing we've done in 2010, same thing we did in 2009, shared. You get the information from the mayor, from the state's office. We'll look at the committee line, the board lines, precinct lines. Usually it's just a rubber stamp unless there's something really glaringly missed from the state.
So is it a generic city council meeting by those three members that people can attend?
It'll be a committee member... Committee meeting held here, and everybody's welcome to participate.
Okay, thank you very much.
You are welcome.
On the motion to approve, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, approved 11-0. Agenda item 32.
Order Number 21-108336, the appointment of William Fowler to the planning board for a five-year term to expire on February 2, 2026. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the appointment. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. 32, 3.
Order Number 21-108337, the appointment of Marsha Waldman to the Cultural Council for a three-year term from date of council confirmation. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the appointment. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, approved 11-0. 34.
Order Number 21-108338, the reappointment of William Dunbar to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term to expire on February 2, 2024. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counsel Dumas.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the appointment is approved 11-0. Agenda item 35.
Order Number 21-108276A, petition for Massachusetts Electric to install a new pole 45-2 within the public right-of-way approximately 103 feet west of Poll 25-1 on Forest Street. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's approved 11-0. 36.
Order Number 21-108292A, petition for Massachusetts Electric to install 280 feet of four-to-five-inch conduit for manhole number 10, poll number 93 on Donald Lynch Boulevard near Bigelow Street. Recommendation of Public Services Committee is to approve.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's approved 11-0. 37.
Order Number 21-108294B, petition of Verizon Wireless for the installation of a small cell wireless facility to be located on the existing pole within the layout of the public right-of-way at 237 Boston Post Road West, poll number 19. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Counselor Landers.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved. Anybody want to do 38 again?
No.
Counsel Tenera. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned at 9:57. Good job, everyone.